Call to order. Now I'm switching this, we're going in reverse order. All right, call to order, the meeting of the planning board, August 21st, 2018. Everybody's present, excellent. Just want to take a minute to recognize our new associate member, Lori Crane. So, welcome to Lori, thanks for being here, and enjoy. All right, we're going to start with bond releases, people want their money back. 1665 Great Pond Road, TKZ LLC, request release of remaining bond funds, $4,000, associated with demolition of an existing single-family dwelling, et cetera. Monica, what can you report?
So, why don't you have special permit? It was originally approved back in April of 2016, which allowed the demolition of an existing single-family structure and the construction of a new single-family dwelling with a reconstructed upper driveway as well. In May of 2017, the planning board approved a modification to reconfigure and replace the existing driveway with stormwater and drainage enhancements and install a patio and an in-ground pool. This all took place in a non-disturbance and non-discharge zone. The applicant is here today, they've submitted as-built plans. You'll notice on the plans that were included in your set, there is no pool constructed there. The pool was, has obviously decided not to install the pool. A letter of compliance from the engineer was included as well, and they detailed some minor differences, but all in all, it appears that the plan conforms with what was approved.
You're okay with that?
I am okay, and I've been out to the site, it looks good.
I would make a motion to approve the release of the remaining bond money for 1665 Great Pond Road.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You do well when you don't say anything.
Yeah.
All right, 500 Great Pond Road has three requests for release of bonds. They're each, they're each different bonds within the same site plan, so I think we'll vote them together unless anybody has an objection to them. Okay. Monica, what can you tell us about 500 Great Pond Road, North Andover Country Club?
All right, so back in July of 2014, the board approved a site plan review special permit and a watershed special permit to allow the construction of an additional three parking spaces on the premises, as well as four parking spaces along a widened portion of the roadway, for a total of 27 new parking spaces. The project also involved, actually, the rehabilitation, rehabilitation of a new, of a putting green, as well as the, a new cart path. Let me see, a four paddle tennis court, a new short game practice area, drainage system work, upgrades to the drainage system, and all this took place in the general and non-disturbance zone of the watershed special permit. The applicant did submit a letter of, actually, the board approved some insubstantial changes to allow for a covert that was originally going to be removed from the plan, the covert ended up staying. When the as-built was submitted, there is a couple deviations that were noted on the plan. One was, there was an existing gravel path, it was relocated, and so it is now within 100 feet of the wetland buffer zone. And there were also some invasive species that we noticed within the retaining pond. This morning, the applicant submitted some new information, some pictures, actually, let me bring those up, showing that they, what they've done was replace the gravel, it was kind of dirt, so there was a possibility of runoff there, so they replaced the gravel. And also, they stated that they removed the invasives. Unfortunately, I hadn't had a chance to go up to the site this morning to view if the invasives were removed. But what they are, is seeking the rebond, the release of three bonds. One was a $5,000 bond, which is associated with their site plan review special permit. Another is an additional $10,000 bond, which is associated with their site plan review special permit, and that was for a site opening. And the other was a $5,000 bond, which is associated with their watershed special permit. And I will bring up the photos to show you where they stand today.
So, with, the only, so you haven't been able to verify the invasive species removal?
Exactly.
Everything else has been verified and okay?
Right, so I received notification of, yeah, I haven't been to this, they submit the information, so I don't know about the gravel, I see the photos, so I see photo proof, but I don't know about the invasives. There were no photos taken of the invasives, and I didn't have a chance to go up to the site.
So, which of the three does the invasive species refer to? Of the three bonds here?
Let me see, that is a good question.
It seemed like it would go with the watershed special permit? Yeah?
Generally, those that would cover that.
We have the decision, huh?
I do, let me double check.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with voting to release the bond subject to a visit, and, you know, you'll look at it, and it's okay, and then if it's not, you know, we'll hold it off, but, you know.
And that's, that's definitely fine, you can definitely put contingencies on it, and I will go up tomorrow. So, this is the pictorial evidence of the gravel that was replaced. During my last site plan, my last site visit, you could see remnants of some of the gravel, but there was a lot of dirt. And I also, I visited the site with Jennifer Hughes of Conservation.
I believe she was going out this afternoon to look at the invasive species as well.
Okay. Yeah.
What was the location of the invasive species?
In the retention pond, and I apologize, I don't know the exact location, on the paddle port side of Great Pond Road.
So, I'll show you.
There's, what, two ponds that break down.
Let me see if I can bring that up. Okay.
So, the white hand, stoplighting area.
I'll kind of circle around a little bit. Jennifer identified the invasives as frag, that's all. But I did not receive notification of her, of the evidence of her visit today, so I would have to take a look myself.
Were there any other pictures, or just those?
Just, just those, those were it came today.
I mean, I agree with John, I think it makes sense to release them, and we can condition it on planning's, the planning department's approval of the gravel and the invasive species removal, and assuming that's okay, then release it, if not, then we'll come back on, at our next meeting, and decide what we should withhold.
So, I'll make a motion to that effect.
I refuse myself on this.
Okay.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If, Monica, so that's approved with those conditions, if for some reason it's not where it needs to be, we would need some sort of measurement of what it would cost to do that remaining work, should it not be completed, and that's what we would withhold, and we can release the remainder.
Excellent, I'll be sure.
I don't anticipate that, but it should be done, but we just need confirmation. Okay, great.
While you're here, just a quick question, any progress on the golf balls in the water?
Yes, we talked about that last night, we removed them last year at the lake cleanup day, and if you want to pick me up on your boat again, and we can take a tour, happy to go.
Okay.
All right.
I'll say, I'll say my daughter has contributed to picking up some of them, too.
I thought you were going to say she's contributed to them in the.
But, no, that would be my husband. My daughter's going to fish them out.
Okay, 660 Great Pond Road, Rolling Ridge Retreat and Conference Center. Good evening.
Good evening.
Monica, what can you tell us about Rolling Ridge's request?
All right, this past April, you approved a paving project to actually repave portions of their driveway. The repaving is complete, the grass in the swales has grown in, and now the applicant is released, is seeking the release of a $2,000 performance bond, and there were no issues. I've been out to the site, everything looks like it's built to.
Do we have any pictures? I'm just, I'm just more curious than anything.
Hmm, I did not attach pictures, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I, I was just actually curious, how did it turn out?
It turned out well, so everyone's very pleased, and hopefully you'll be all be able to join us for our 78th anniversary on September 30th, so you can actually see it for yourself.
Okay, well, yeah, we can, so while you're here, why don't we, we have correspondence, Rolling Ridge Invitation, why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
So, on September 30th, Rolling Ridge is celebrating 70, 70 years of ministry in the community, and we wanted to invite all the planning board to come and join us. And so, it'll be starting at 2:30 through 6:30 with dinner included, and so we hope that you'll be able to join us for, and see the good work that we've been doing over the last few years.
Well, thank you very much, and that's great that you guys were able to get this done so quickly and efficiently, so.
Yeah, we appreciate your support in getting it done as well.
All right, thank you, so, we have a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the release of all remaining bond fund for 660 Great Pond Road.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to continued public hearings. 1429 Osgood Street, Oliver Enterprise, application for a site plan review special permit under Sections 8.3, 10.3, 10.31, and 16 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. Applicant proposes exterior and interior renovation to an existing building and seeks a special permit to allow a contractor's yard and outside storage of landscape products located within the corridor development district 3, CTD 3 zoning district. We've been here a couple of times on this, hoping to close the public hearing today. Monica, can you tell us where we're at in terms of peer review and department comments?
Okay, so all department comments came back except for health. Under health, they're still reviewing their application, they submitted basically a four pages of comments, and asked the applicant to resubmit their septic plans for, for review and approval. Those are still outstanding.
Are there any issues from health outside of septic?
No.
Or it just having to do with the septic?
It just has to do with septic, so if you do take a vote on today, I would recommend including a contingency that you, that we receive an approved plan.
Okay, is that, and is that part of the draft? I assume that's the condition of the draft.
Yes, and if, if it skipped, if it slips through the cracks, it will definitely be found.
All right, we'll check that.
Okay.
Okay. Hi.
How are you?
We're doing great. Tell us where we're at.
So, just for reminder, Bridget Souza with Allen &amp; Major Associates. So, we got the comments back from Board of Health, working on incorporating those comments into the plans. Thankfully, none of them are layout changes, they're just more details, looking for more information, adding another detail or two, but layout, layout-wise, nothing will change from what is on the plans that we submitted to you guys. Other than that, TEC said that we addressed all their comments. Horsey &amp; Whitten was already wrapped up by the previous planning board meeting, so it's just getting on the septic plans.
Okay, and any, so in terms of the design, the layout, contractor's yard, everything else seems to be the same?
Yes.
Does, do any members of the board have any questions or comments for the applicants?
I should add that since the, the last plans were submitted, lighting plans were included, I don't know if you had a chance to review those, and those seem to confirm with, to conform with zoning code, the building commissioner has reviewed it as well, given it's okay.
Fire, police seem to have okayed as well?
Yes, those were okayed at the last meeting.
Do any members of the public have anything that they wish to add? Questions? No? Okay. If there's nothing further, then if we can get a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can look at the decision.
We have a decision.
I, that's what I was looking at, do we have a draft decision, Monica?
I did prepare one, is it not including your packet? There also should be a printed copy. No, it's this.
I do not see one.
You can run and make some copies?
That would be good. All right, so, why don't we get, do we want to close the public hearing? And then we can take up the draft decision when we have hard copies.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, so, can we get a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Give us five minutes to get some paper copies, so we can look through it, make any changes that we want, and then we'll, we'll get back to you guys.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Ree Street subdivision. Application for definitive subdivision to subdivide map 38 lot, 37 into seven single-family residential lots with municipal water, under Master General Chapter 41, Sections 81O, 81T, 81U, it's in the R2 zoning district. After the last meeting here, we did have a site view, I know myself and Mr. Boynton were there, I hope everyone had a chance to at least go out to the area and take a look, and now we'll see where we're at. So, the way this one will do, we'll do, Monica, I'll have you kind of give introduction as to where we stand from Towns End in terms of departments and peer reviews and such. I'll have the applicant kind of tell us where you're on, where you are on your end, and then we'll invite public comment. We may sneak back to that other one, just to let them get done if this is going on, so.
All right.
Good.
Great, so we had our, the site visit, as you, as you mentioned, the public came as well. We also, out of concerns for public safety as, in regards to traffic and pedestrian safety related to schoolchildren passing through, we had a department site visit as well, so fire, DPW, planning, and police went out to the site to, to look around because there was a question regarding whether the street made more sense to be a cul-de-sac, or was it more, or was it safe to be a throughway? I included correspondence from both the fire department as well as DPW, and they did say that, from a functional standpoint, a cul-de-sac is fine, they can get to the site, they can plow the site, they, the fire department would, would ask not to have hydrants at the end of the cul-de-sac out of fear of burying them, but they did state that from connectivity, a throughway was better, as long as there's sidewalks, as long as it was narrow, and as long as stop signs were placed at the ends of both streets. So, it was overwhelmingly, they agreed that a through, a throughway would work well, there wouldn't be any safety issues there, as long as there was a sidewalk in place. Also, in terms of review, in terms of the roadway width, there was a, there's a proposed easement on the plan. We looked at this easement, and it, the placement of it was a bit unusual, simply because it bisected the setbacks, actually, cutting the setbacks in half, so instead of a 30, instead of a 30-foot setback that, like it should be, it was basically cutting it in half, so it would vary upon different lots. We've asked the engineer to go back and view that, because that's not conforming with our code, so that's.
Can you explain, I'm missing that.
Yes.
And an easement for whom, to whom?
So, it would be a roadway easement to allow theoretically a 50-foot roadway easement. Our bylaw requires a 50-foot wide roadway, which would encompass pavement of any sort, sidewalks, utilities, things of that nature. So, what they, on our plan as it exists, there is currently a 20-foot wide roadway here, and then the easement, I don't know if you can see, would be along this dotted line here.
So, are you saying that the 50-foot right-of-way is not going to be granted in feet of the town when it's done? Or is part of the, is it still part of the lots? Because, I mean, what we want is, we want 50 feet, that that belongs to the town, and I, I'd never seen that in all my years of planning, we're not having that, so, but that would be a big problem in my mind.
Yeah, this is highly unusual. In terms of the setback, the setback is usually set from the edge of the roadway. You measure from the edge of the roadway to the.
Or edge of the right-of-way, not the actual physical roadway, but the edge of the right-of-way.
Right, however, this now becomes the edge of your, your right-of-way, so we've asked the engineer to look at this, there's plenty of room on the site to make some adjustments, at least we feel there is, so that's something they're going to be adjusting before the next meeting.
So, but regardless of ownership, if it's a 50, if we have 50 feet across, the setbacks aren't going to be conforming, is that accurate?
Exactly, and that's our concern.
If part of the right-of-way is on the lots, I mean, that's what's causing the problem, but it's also, we always want to take the fee, the 50 feet, we don't want to take part of the roadway as an easement, we want to own it.
Is there a reason that it was done this way? Is it because of the water issues down on 117, any sense?
Why don't we, why don't we, so let's, we'll, we'll let the applicant address the easement issue, anything else to go over?
No, that's it, once, I think, once they determine, once you determine whether you agree on a cul-de-sac versus a throughway, then, you know, we could take the next step, but I think that was one of the, the concerns, like which direction you were going to take.
What about, what about the traffic studies?
Traffic study has not been provided yet, that's ongoing. One of the issues that was brought up by the police department is that, of course, school is not in session. Generally, a traffic study to be accurate should take place at least two weeks after the start of the school year, to get a more accurate depiction of what traffic will look like. So, we're probably looking at late September.
What's the, the drainage analysis that's been done so far, is it, is it a complete, is it completed?
No, that is ongoing. We still, we haven't received feedback from our peer review. I think he said he was still waiting for information from the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Sir?
Okay, Philip Christensen, engineer for the applicant. Ray Street is a townway, although unimproved, and it varies from about 33 feet, which is roughly two rods, is where the old measurements were, to some places about 50 feet, but it's variable width, the whole width of it. We have done subdivisions in town in the past, first one was probably in 1985, went to Green Estates out near the Boxford Line on Foster Street, and Foster Street wasn't 50 feet wide, and we provided a roadway widening easement for Foster Street, and we've done more since. I think South Bradford's done like that a bit in some areas as well, you may remember that, John.
Yeah, I'm not sure where.
There's some like that. Just, just so most of you are aware, most roadways in towns are by easement, they're not by fee. And in fact, unless, if you do a subdivision, and if the attorneys that write the deeds don't exclude the fee in the way, it belongs to the homeowner. So, we've run into problems with that in some subdivisions where one attorney wrote the deed properly, the next one didn't, and then somebody wants to go through to get to another piece of property, and the homeowner that owns to the center of the road won't allow them through, we've had that happen in places. But just as background, most roads are by easement, not by fee.
But I think, the, the point remains, other than some very exceptional things with individual lots and very small situations, is that the, the roadway is not included in, in anybody's lot, I mean, it's just not.
I mean, I live on 113 in West Newbury, and that, I owned, well, I used to, I don't live on its street now, but I owned to the middle of 113. That's what I owned, but it's an easement, the roadway is an easement.
But I mean, my, my point is that I, I can't remember all my years of the planning board, a situation where we have part of what is the roadway that's also included in the acreage of a lot.
As I said, on Foster Street.
There might be a very small exception to that, but, you know, I'm talking about, you know, 30 or 40 subdivisions we've done in town, so if, if, if that's what you're doing here, I don't understand why you have to do it, I don't think you have to do that.
Well, it's, but, in any case, what we got, what Monica asked, an opinion from Town Council, Town Council said, you need to have the setbacks from the house from the edge of the right-of-way, whether it's an easement or not.
Right.
So, we could change that plan, we haven't had time to change it and do all of the things we need to, but what I have here is a plan that shows that, where we would change the, the right-of-way line comes here, it's 50 feet from the other side, and then all of these houses would conform with the setback, which is showing this, the gent line. So, it can be done, and if, particularly if Council says that's, that's the way it's got to be done, and that's the way it's got to be done, I don't have any problem with that. Whether it's fee or easement, that's another issue, and we'll have to get back to that one.
But it is meant to be a, a public road, not a private road, right?
It's a public road, yes.
So, I mean, I, again, my experience may not be as much, but my experience is that in subdivisions, if it's going to be a public road.
And it is a public road, even though the public doesn't own the fee. As I said, most of the roads in town, you own, you have control by easement, you don't own the fee in those roads, because that's the way it used to be done.
Right, well, right, but if we're having newer roads, and the town's responsible for it, it seems that the town.
Right, and in this case, the town, you do have a road.
Right.
And the fee in that road is in Ray Street, and his own, as an owner representative, we're providing a method to widen that out to a 50-foot right-of-way, but maintain the fee with the lot. But we'll talk to our attorneys about it, and we can get back to you on that. But anyway, we can address that issue that Monica raised.
Okay.
With regard to the cul-de-sac, we did do a plan, which we submitted, which I think Monica was able to show the.
Yes.
Can we?
He'll bring that up.
And it's whether you want us to pursue the cul-de-sac or not.
All right, can you tell us about this, that?
Well, it's, cul-de-sac goes in, and really, the road is about 200 feet shorter in length, we can get frontage on, on the cul-de-sac for the same number of homes.
Which ones, which homes are you chose, it's six and seven that you'd be changing?
We turn those houses around the lots, pretty much configure the same, but the houses are spun just so they face the cul-de-sac. So, that would be, that's what a cul-de-sac plan would look like.
So, the cul-de-sac is on the side of?
Towards that stub of Ray Street, where Ralph Joyce used to live? Yeah.
The, towards the abbott end, yeah, not to the, the north cross end would, would come out, right, okay. So, let me ask you this, related to that, from a drainage perspective, as opposed to a, a traffic and through and so on perspective, which ends up being easier to manage the drainage?
Not much difference, you have, you're eliminating 200 feet of road, and you're adding a cul-de-sac, which is a fairly big paved area, but it's almost equal, so it's, it'll be the same drainage issue.
But, so it won't really.
Not substantially different, no?
It's not going to be substantially different, okay.
But it does eliminate the through traffic, which was an issue with the board, so it's whether, you know, we need some direction from the board, hear from police and fire, which would prefer through-street, the board's the one that makes the decision what it's going to be. If you want this, then we have to modify the subdivision plan and the lotting sheets to reflect it. If you, if you want to go with what police and fire say, then we'll stay with the same plan, and just modify and address that issue Monica raised about easement versus fee.
From where I sit, and I'm curious to hear, I see that there are some of the neighbors and the butters here, so I'm curious to hear what they have to say as well, but my initial instinct here is that if the, these houses are going in, in that location, given the proximity to the sergeant's school, and just the foot traffic that happens in that area.
given the proximity to the sergeant's school and just the foot traffic that happens in that area, I would vastly prefer the cul-de-sac rather than the throughway. I think what I'm hearing from Monica and seeing in these is that, well, the town departments might prefer a throughway because it may be slightly easier. There is nothing that says that they find a significant issue with the cul-de-sac. So my support for some sort of project like this, I think, is really going to hinge on this being a cul-de-sac rather than a throughway, just given what I know about that neighborhood and the number of children walking to school and the traffic patterns in the morning and around school time.
And are there proposed sidewalks for this as a cul-de-sac?
No, there's no sidewalks that connect from the other end.
Okay, no, I was just asking.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be any sidewalks here, because they wouldn't go anywhere. If we had a through-street, we'd put a sidewalk here that would connect to Abbott, because there is a sidewalk up there.
And would, would there be, if in the cul-de-sac model, there's just got any traffic sign or anything, or stop sign, anything at the initial? Or just from, where is it connecting, is it North Cross?
At South, between, uh, North and South Cross.
Well, it's, it's North Cross and Ray Street.
So what was discussed with police, fire was definitively, if you decided to do a through-street, to put stop signs at the ends of both?
I'd assume there'd be something at the end here if-
If you ended up making this a cul-de-sac, correct, that means the people on the street, if they were walking, if they wanted to go to the sergeant's school, would have to walk out to North Cross, up North Cross, up to Abbott, and come back, right? But if it were a through-street, what they would do is they would walk straight through to the other part of Ray Street and then right to the school. So it would be a short walk for the people of the new houses.
Unless you put a-
Why couldn't you just walk through the path that's already there?
You know, you could put a paved path up to the end of that paved area that served those homes.
Yeah, okay.
But not half-street.
Right, I, I mean, you could just have a little path, just, you know, because it's all owned, but just have a little path.
How it gets maintained in the winter is another.
Could the home association just have a little path there?
There'd be no, there wouldn't be one, because it's not a cluster.
We do need, we do need a homeowners' association for the drainage. There would be, yeah, because they're straddling lot lines and whatnot, and the town won't take care of those, obviously. So we do need a homeowners' association for that anyway. So there'd be some sort of entity that could do it if you had to.
But all the cars from that street would go down-
Would have to go-
To North Cross and come back up across Abbott.
Yes, if they were driving to school. Just for your information, in researching it a little bit, this 20% of the towns and, 20% of the homes in town have children in K through five, rough numbers. Might be a little bit less than that, because people have kids closer together. But that's the way the numbers work out. So you're looking at, you know, maybe one child here, possibly two from this subdivision, statistically would be going to school there. And traffic flow, just so you know, traffic, if you look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers handbook's, the subdivisions, it's about 0.7 cars in the peak morning traffic. So here it would be five cars, spread over two hours, is what the morning traffic would be from a subdivision like this. From, and that's just from the transportation engineer's studies, so.
Well, that's, that's, that makes sense for those seven houses. The problem is not those seven houses and the traffic impact. What concerns me are all the families that drive over to the sergeant to drop their kids off that are already flying up and down Abbott and Ray. And if you now add in sort of a straight shot from summer, it's the, it's the additional cars in town that will use that, that cut-through. So that is, it's, I understand that these seven houses themselves will have a limited impact on traffic, but it's when you connect two different parts of town that feed into the same school, that's the biggest elementary school in town, right where the kids are walking. Though, that sort of chain event is what concerns me in particular about a throughway.
Oh, I'm sorry. I agree with your point about it's the cut-throughs.
Yeah.
I agree. Can you just help me understand, if it were a cul-de-sac, why is the cul-de-sac in this direction?
I suspect I'm missing something here, but, I, I mean theoretically, could it be in the other direction? Theoretically, it could be. You do have problems in trying to develop a road between where Abbott and Ray Street meet and this point, because it's-
People on this, there's a hill on this side of the road now, which is already developed.
Right.
If you try to bring a road in there, and you see what they have there-
Yes.
It's going to be very disruptive to them to do that.
Right.
And very difficult to do it and still keep their driveway where it is.
Right.
So it's one reason we wouldn't want to go, we prefer to go this way-
Yeah.
As, as opposed to the other way.
Any other reasons for it in this direction?
No, I think it's just a more direct approach. I mean, you just come up summer, down Ray Street. I, the other way is a little bit, little bit more jumbled, I think, you know, with that triangle at Abbott and Ray Street coming up and then taking a hard right. It's just a little, little odd.
Yeah, it is a very, it's more than a night in return, isn't it? I mean, it's, it's pretty current.
But it's just, it's odd the way those streets all come together up there, yeah.
Well, I take your point about the existing houses, because on the site visit, that wasn't quite a focus of attention of-
Yeah.
How are you actually going to do, I mean, I, I know you can, but it looked like it would be more disruptive.
Yeah, it'd be disruptive to go that way. So this way, we thought if we're doing a cul-de-sac, and, and also it, in reality too, when you look at it, you try to put a cul-de-sac down on Lot 7, and you have riverfront area and whatnot. So I think you would actually lose a lot at that end. The cul-de-sac would wind up being over where the house is on Lot 7, I think, if you came in the other way.
So in terms of the traffic flow, everybody agrees that the impact of these houses themselves, we're not going to add much traffic, it's going to be, you know, trivial. What, what I'm trying to understand a little bit is, there is an existing flow today, right? And like if, if somebody is going to the sergeant's school, do most people that go to the sergeant's school go up Abbott Street? If they're coming from further out country, do they, do they come up Abbott Street? Is that the way they go?
A lot of people, so to get to the, to the sergeant's school for a drop-off, if you're dropping your child off by car, you have to enter from Johnson Street. So you get traffic coming two directions. You get some people coming up Johnson Street. And then you also get a number of people coming up Abbott to that triangle from all directions funneling in, taking Ray Street up towards Johnson and then going, so.
So you have to go in on the John, you don't, you can't go in on the Abbott Street side?
No, that's the bus on the entrance.
That's the bus, okay. So-
The bus and walkers.
So I assume if you're coming from summer, from there, it wouldn't be a one-crash.
So if you're coming from Abbott Street, how do you end up getting to, over to the, that entrance?
So what people will do is they will come from all, both directions on Abbott and converge on where that triangle is, right, where it meets Ray Street. Where, so where Ray sort of hooks over and where we're talking about.
Okay, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't really show the streets.
At the end where the cul-de-sac is.
At the end there, and they will sort of funnel down from both directions around that triangle into Ray Street and take Ray Street up past the Reynolds Playground to Johnson.
Okay.
And then turn onto Johnson and go in that way.
Okay, and does any, but it's all Abbott Street, but today it's not Summer Street?
Summer Street, no. Well, Summer Street now, well, it sort of depends on which way you're coming from, right? Like if you're down at like the Raleigh Tavern area, and I think those folks take Johnson. I think the people who are the other end of Summer or sort of out Foster will come down Abbott, you know? And I think, I think that's the way that most folks do it. But I think if you open that up on Summer, or if you open that Summer cut-through, what you're going to lose, so the people, like I think everybody from like the Raleigh Tavern neighborhood and down that way, it's sort of in that middle, between Abbott, between Johnson, all those families that aren't on buses and that drive are going to cut right through on that street rather than sit in the traffic on Johnson or on Abbott or on Salem.
So, but I, but I mean, what it does is it moves where the traffic. If you put that through, I could see that more people would come through on that new thing. But it wouldn't increase the number of trips, it would just move them off.
What it does is it, what my concern is that is it funnels all of those cars now cutting through right to the middle, where you have a lot of children who walk. A lot of the walkers in that neighborhood come from this, or come from Nutmeg, come from Ray.
Okay.
And so they're all walking, and a lot of the walkers sort of come together at those sidewalks and around that triangle and walk up the street.
So is it, is it that if the triangle is a focus of current traffic concerns, that the through-street would add a third road? Instead of two roads feeding into the triangle, it would add a third road into the triangle? And so the issue is not so much the increased traffic on the new road, it's that there would be an increased number of cars converging on the triangle.
Coming into a very awkward spot.
Yeah, and the issue there is not the car, the concern isn't the problem for the cars. The concern is that that triangle and the surrounding area is where there's a lot of kids walking.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I think you're right, but I think it actually does impact the car. I mean, apart from the reason-
No, no, yeah, I, yeah, I agree it would, but I think that, at least what I'm hearing, the concern is, is, is more the safety of the kids walking.
The reason why I'm, I'm sort of being a devil's advocate in this issue is that it is a, it's a very consistent planning principle that you try to get through streets whenever you possibly can, rules and regulations.
So I actually wanted to ask, because you've done so many of these. I read the police and, or the fire and the DPW concerns about a cul-de-sac, but, and I've heard you say before, since I've been on the board, that it's kind of a principle. But why? What are the downsides?
The reason why, the reason why it's a principle is that if you have nothing but cul-de-sacs, what it does is it forces all the through-traffic on the small number of streets. I mean, ultimately, part of the reason why we have such a bottleneck at the old center is because of the fact that what, the pattern of development over 40 or 50 years. And if, you know, if you go back to one of the old basket plans, they actually said they'd do another cut-through out to 114. So you do end up, you know, rerouting traffic. And so my point is that if you're going to make an exception and you're going to allow a cul-de-sac, you better do it for absolutely compelling reasons. Because one of the things that, for example, the police said, although in their report, but they said it very modestly, if you end up having a problem when that's new street, by only having one entry point in there, you're actually creating a more riskier proposition than you would have otherwise. And the same thing for virtually everything in the neighborhood.
I mean, the, the big issue in that respect is that if there's a serious incident and first responders respond down the cul-de-sac, and let's say there's an injury, and the injured person has to be brought out, you've got all the first responders stacked up, and that's the only way out.
You've got them stacked up, or what if, there's a, what if a, you know, there's a power line goes down and you need to get to one of the houses and there's only one entry point in? It's, it's always, you know, what we've done in any kind of subdivision of any size, we've always tried to make it so that the length of the dead-end street is as short as possible, because that's just good planning.
Right.
And, you know, the rule is that you run the subdivision up to the property line and then you allow extension under the abutting property, which you want it to continue through, you don't want to cut it off.
So to that point, have, have cul-de-sacs ever been built with some sort of gated emergency outlet where the distance to the next street is quite short?
I can't think of any, can you think of any, Phil?
We, we've done them with breakaway gates that, you know, the fire department can just drive through, but not a short distance.
I mean, you see like, there's a couple places you see out on the 125, but they're more in Andover.
Well, that's the first thing I thought about here, is to, because of the length of the cul-de-sac, I agree with you, I think it's a, it's a, I think there's a risk associated with it, the length of the cul-de-sac for the reasons you have just discussed. But I wondered if some sort of emergency gate might resolve that.
Well, I, I mean, here's sort of my thinking and data this is, so I approach this with the presumption that you should normally expect to have a through-street, so you have to have a compelling reason to, to do it the other way. But now that I see that two, where the two roads that are a little messy now become three, if you put a through-street in, or I think both for vehicle and pedestrian access, that's a problem.
Yeah.
And that, you know, otherwise what would end up happening is a couple of years, you'd have to redesign that whole intersection there completely. And, and I don't think we're ready to do that. So this would be a case where if, if we decided to go with that, I, I could live with it, but we'd have to really document it in a very compelling way, because, believe me, I don't think you want that to be the regular practice. But I think you can make an exception in this case because of the unusual circumstances.
So two compelling circumstances associated with the triangle.
Yeah.
Safety of pedestrians, kids, but also vehicles. But I want to layer on, and I agree with that, but I want to layer on top of that, is some type of emergency responder gate possible?
It's a good question, I'm not sure you, but I guess my question is, do you even need a gate? Were you meaning that, would you want the rest of that way paved from the cul-de-sac? So that, I mean, if it's maintained and, and you should still be able to-
Just go through, in an emergency, you're saying, for an emergency response vehicle?
Right.
Yeah?
As long as it's cleared off, I'm not sure that you need, there's no gate there now. I'm not sure you even need necessarily a gate, because I think people know.
And if the emergency is compelling, then an emergency responder would simply go through.
Yeah.
One thing I want to bring up is during our site visit, when I did have DPW, fire, and police out, was the importance of if it was going to be a through-street, there would be, have to be stop signs to stop the traffic. Those edges where it's kind of wonky, if you're forced to stop already on a narrow street, you would have to look for people. Another thought was, if it's a through-street, there has to be a sidewalk. And one, a couple of issues that were brought up in regards to the cul-de-sac is, when you have a cul-de-sac, you get, you have people that drive in, and then they have to drive out. So you have double the amount of traffic traveling that same, that same way. So that was something that, that was brought up during our site visit. If you have a through-street, you just have one car and it goes through. It doesn't double back and go around.
I've got to say though, when you look at the amount of traffic that travels Johnson Street and Salem Street and the pressure points of traffic in our town, like at the rush hour times, you put a street that cuts through and connects over from Summer over to Abbott, what you're done is, it's not just at the school time, but you're going to increase traffic there exponentially throughout all of the rush hour, in both directions. My primary concern is the children walking to school, because I think this is an unsafe place to have it. But I think that if you make it a cul-de-sac, even if a car has six to trips on it, I think the amount of traffic on that street, if it's a cul-de-sac, is much less than if it's a through-way.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think one of the things we got to think about here is that when we get into the master plan conversation, the general problem of people using all of the streets to, not for local traffic, but to get from one place to the other. Because I think that's the real problem, is that these are meant to really be residential streets and now they're becoming broader streets. And, I mean, that, that's been a problem with Johnson Street forever. I mean, back, I remember when I first got on, there's more people on Johnson Street complaining about that. And, but you don't want to make every street that. And I think, I think you're right that, you know, I'm coming around slowly, I think you're right. Then, you know, this is an exception to the general rule of connecting your streets.
And I commute on Johnson on rush hour, so I-
I, I lived on Johnson for a lot of years and commuted on it. I mean, the other thing I will say about your comments, Monica, which are well-taken, I, I think if it does go through, you absolutely need a stop sign. But I'm pretty sure there's a stop sign at the end of right now, and I'm pretty sure nobody ever stops at it. Is there no stop sign? Maybe I'm just the only one that stops there.
When you're driving, it feels like you should to some people, and just others it doesn't.
It's a ridiculous intersection. I don't know how this ever developed in the way it is, but like, it's just not a safe place normally now, like at, at rush hour or whatever, I just-
So you're looking for some guidance from us?
Yes, I want to just suggest something too. If we were to do a cul-de-sac, we should probably do it as an easement, like we used to do when, right? So the, the cul-de-sac portion that's on the lot would be by easement. You still have the fee in the way that if, in the future, you want to make that a through-street, you could put the street through and just pull out the cul-de-sac portion that's on the lot. You, you know what I mean?
Right, no, I know exactly what you mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's the way we would design that, okay.
But I, you, you said from a design point of view, it's, it does introduce a lot of complications.
A developer, if you do a subdivision, the first house is its seller at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, right, yeah, the lot, yeah.
I'm telling you, you put a little pathway through there, you're, that's going to be- I'm telling you, you put a little pathway through there, you're, that's going to be a huge selling point for the developer for their kids can walk right to the sergeant through this little path, like.
So why don't we hear from anyone who wants to speak from the public?
One other thing we are, and Monica's got it as well, Greg Hochmuth is working on, he's doing the environmental stuff, but he's working with the fern to put in a beaver deceiver in that beaver dam that's down there to keep the water level from rising. I think you got that today, didn't you, Monica?
Oh, an email did come in today. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. But anyway, Mr. Vicina is ready to hire somebody to do that, you know, if the subdivision goes ahead. So that what the beaver deceivers are, it's just a structure that keeps the water at the same level. No matter how high they build the dam, the water's going to stay at the same level. And the, the problem the neighbors have is that the water keeps getting deeper and deeper because the dam keeps getting higher. So, and it protects this subdivision as well.
Great.
So one, one more question that I had is, in, in lieu of a cul-de-sac, what is your experience with simple signage, something that would say like, do not enter between the hours of, is that proven to be effective or not effective?
I, I don't think it is, no. People, people don't pay attention to, to them too much, especially if they're in a rush to get somewhere.
Hard to enforce in this particular neighborhood unless you have a police officer probably standing there. Good question. Okay, so why don't we take anyone from the public who wants to say anything? Please give us your name, your address, and then if you have questions, direct them to us and we'll get the engineer to comment. If you have just statements you want to make, then feel free.
Rick Green, three fifty-seven Ray Street, in Andover. Just on the proposed cul-de-sac plan, a couple of questions for possibly the engineer. In terms of the acceptance of the section of Ray Street that exists now, how would that be handled with a cul-de-sac? That's one question. I heard the comment that it was possibly a paved walkway from the cul-de-sac to the existing part of Ray Street with no gate. That would be a very poor idea because that's going to be used by vehicles, no doubt. And also with the cul-de-sac, I still think you need signage of some sort at the intersection of Ray Street where it comes up to the hill. There really should be a stop sign there. I can tell you that I almost get hit quite frequently going home. Also, the cul-de-sac presents another problem with more GPS. GPS does not recognize Ray Street as a paper street, so there's going to be a lot more turnaround. So would the, would the applicant be willing to put up some signage to, because there are only three homes on that end of Ray Street right now, myself, three fifty-six and three fifty-one. So I think there were additional signage would be needed. I'm, I'm in favor of the cul-de-sac, but I do think it's going to create a lot more traffic down there. That is not a, not a real true cul-de-sac down that end. We already have a problem with GPS.
Can I ask a dumb question related to that? Because the way I looked at it, the way I said, you should change the name of what-
Well, it really shouldn't be Ray Street, right? Ray Street takes a right-hand turn.
It's not Ray Street. How can Ray Street go in two directions simultaneously?
I agree with you, John.
Yeah, okay. I'm not crazy about that, yeah.
In, in terms of signage on Ray Street, I mean, I actually think that would probably be on the, that's probably on the town's property, not the applicant's property. I mean, it makes perfect sense to-
I, I agree with you. I'm just saying whether it becomes for the board selectment or the planning board, there really needs to be some additional signage there. Even in the triangle, I can tell you with the triangle coming out of Ray Street, I almost get hit because they don't stop there.
Well, that is a, the point you make about whether it's paved or unpaved, and then to Peter's point about a gate, it, it, just a kind of some sort of symbol or gate that says this is not a street would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with a gate for emergency access, but to leave it ungated and just paved is going to invite traffic.
Right, even if it's something that's unlocked, just, just to show that it's not a continuation of the street. I mean, if it's still, right now it's wooded, you know, at the end there. You just leave it as wooded and, and just clears that you have a path, that, something along those lines is what I was, more of what I was thinking.
When, when I was talking about a path, I was picturing like a walking path for kids to go to school on anything that was drivable.
Yeah, no, I, I understood that.
But I, I, I get your point, like you don't want people to just think it's a throughway even.
Right, because I know there has been in the past, there was, before that path was drivable, there was people who were going down there and dumping.
And I was not suggesting a paved path.
Okay.
No. I agree with what you said.
Okay, and I think in terms of, um, what currently on Ray Street, I would imagine it would just stay the way it is.
Well, because it's not accepted now, so they're going to be doing a lot of, obviously, excavating in the street. So we'd be looking for that to be accepted so that it be maintained by the town. Right now it's maintained, I believe, only by, for emergency, snow plowing and emergency access.
In this cul-de-sac plan, you're not, you're not working on Ray Street, right?
Not work, not the improved section of Ray Street.
Right, right.
If we put the road through, we'd look to get an accepted roadway.
Right.
Or we're not, this plan doesn't do that.
Right, okay.
So that was my other comment. The other, other comment I had was the questions that were submitted, will those be addressed by the engineer or?
Which questions?
I submitted questions.
Um, they don't have to be.
I know they don't. I'm, I'm just asking a question.
I guess we'll see.
Okay, does the engineer have an answer for that?
I mean, to some degree, since we're going to redo the drainage base on, you know, this direction, I think some will be a little bit different.
Yeah.
But you're certainly welcome to see the drainage counts because you're the only one who probably understands that.
I have looked at it.
If you gave it to Monica, I'll get a copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Do we want to address this question?
I think we did. Well, the, the except, if, if, if it's the cul-de-sac, then we don't have to deal with that because we're not actually working on it. If it's a through street, then we'd have to deal with that. Anybody else? I guess I'm kind of inclined to hear what everybody's thoughts are on the cul-de-sac versus, um, versus through street. And really, do you have an opinion now? Do you need more information? Because I do think it is going to influence the answers to the questions and the design and how the applicant moves forward. And so if we ha, if you have enough information to kind of give your thoughts, then I think we should. If you don't, then that's fine, say you don't, but I think if, if we can, so.
I think we've been talking about what we think will happen, but not, we don't, I don't, I don't have a firm sense of, as if that would actually happen, the, the, the traffic patterns that have been discussed. I personally would like to understand that a bit more. I'm not sure if that comes in the way of a traffic study in, in the area. But I, I just, you know, we, we've said a lot of I-thinks, but not a lot of I-knows on the matter. But then again, Mike, yeah, I took my own site visit out there and there's one house, it's on the, I guess, the, the planned north side of what we're, we're looking at here, just what seems to be just off the cul-de-sac. And boy, there, that house would be about fifteen, twenty feet right off the road. And, um, so I could understand how that homeowner may, may favor a, a cul-de-sac in, in this area because that just seems like, it, it seems like a pinch point with those houses on, on that, the, the, the current, I guess, cul-de-sac that's there, the, the road termination is just very tight. It's very pinched.
I, I would say for me, I, 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 I take strongly John's point about connectivity and about, and even the police and fire and DPW, their preference. And if this was a grid in the middle of the town and just, just kind of out of the way of places, and I'd say we do that, but it's such a weird layout as it is and with all, with it being near a school, with kind of the wetlands and with the ability to make it a cul-de-sac and it's only seven houses, I, I would strongly prefer a cul-de-sac to a through street here.
So for me, I also strongly prefer the cul-de-sac and for the reason that I think we can, I think we can strongly, clearly articulate compelling reasons for the cul-de-sac in this case. It's more than one compelling reason. And I think it's really a somewhat elegant solution to the opportunity developed, but also taking into consideration concerns of the abutters and safety in the proximity of the school. So I, I think it's a very nice solution.
John, Jen?
Um, well, I don't need to say anything.
Jen prefers the cul-de-sac.
I do, and I, I want to thank you and the developer for taking the time to consider reconfiguring this into a cul-de-sac because, uh, living around that area and knowing what I know about the traffic patterns, the children walking to and from school, and it, there is no question in my mind that this will be better for the residents in that area. And, and just for the people going into the new houses, for the traffic patterns for the schoolchildren, all around, I think this is, is much better design. So I strongly prefer the cul-de-sac and thank you for taking the time to develop it.
John, anything more to add?
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to thank, I'm grateful for the patience with me to talk through this because in, in the beginning, I really had the impression, you know, the, the thought that we should put, do it as a through road. But when I understand the impact of where the through road would come out and it would be a third road coming out, it would drag traffic probably that goes in a completely different way today, it's, it doesn't make sense. And there is that compelling reason. And I think we could put a waiver in and very clearly say it so that the next person that comes up doesn't say, well, you granted it in this case, there was compelling circumstances. So I, I would go with the cul-de-sac.
And I think the idea of making it so that in the future, theoretically you could make it, I, I mean, I don't see there any harm in making it so that if something changes, you know, if the formation of that triangle suddenly changes over there, the school moves, whatever, if there's compelling circumstances in the future to change it, then you can. So that's kind of the sense of the board. And so I'd say do what you wish with that and why don't we continue for our further drainage comments? And I don't, and if new plans get submitted, obviously submit them to department for review and so we'll continue it to the next hearing date.
My question is, are you not interested in seeing a traffic study or?
No, I, um, on a cul-de-sac?
It's kind of pointless.
I don't think we need, I, do anyone need a traffic study? Do you want to do a traffic study?
No.
The only benefit would be if it, anyway, was still considered.
Yeah, so if, if you, if you, if you change your plan, do it actually, you know, submit a plan as a cul-de-sac.
If you want a through street, then we'll do a traffic study.
If you want a through street, you have to do a traffic study. If you're doing a cul-de-sac, I don't think you need a traffic study.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, um.
Thank you very much.
Our next meeting is when?
September fourth.
Is that enough time to, September fourth? Do you want to come back for September fourth?
We'll see if we can get the plans in and get comments back.
So let's put it on for September fourth. If you're not ready, just let Monica know and we'll move it out to you.
And remember on subdivisions, the clock tolls faster than-
Right.
Right. Two hundred and thirty-five days from the date of September, from the day of submission. So we're looking at October twenty-seventh.
Okay, October twenty-seventh, okay.
Also, we will need copies of, of those plans because they were shown during the meeting, so we just need this for the public record.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, um-
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
September fourth, but just check the agenda beforehand to make sure it's still scheduled for that date. Okay, um, great, thank you very much. Let's go back to fourteen twenty-nine Osgood. Are we good to go back to fourteen twenty-nine Osgood? Do we have the draft decisions?
Yes. Let me up these down.
Thank you.
I will bring one back for you, John.
Monica, one of the things in the finding of fact, we may want to put in the fact that it's, it's basically existing building. So it's not that they're doing the construction from scratch, it's just a modification of existing structure.
Okay, so I will add a point that it's a modification of an existing structure.
Could you also add in the introductory paragraph on the top of page two, says that the hearing was open on June fifth and closed on August twenty-fifth? Could you just list the dates, the other dates that we had it on the agenda as well as a public hearing we held on? Just, just for completeness, just whatever dates we've had it on.
Okay.
So if somebody ever wants to go back and look, they know which days to look at?
So that would be June fifth, nineteen twenty-fourth, and Osgood.
Great.
The, or the waivers, this may tie in with my prior comment, is, is it the CDD three that has the lot coverage required? I, I just, and the open space requirement, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Uh, yes, they do have a lot coverage requirement.
It, the fire for lot coverage is seventy percent and minimum open spaces, the remaining thirty.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's just CDD three because that's, we don't usually do that.
I don't know. Those numbers were specific to this district.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right. That's what I thought. I just, I, I just didn't remember, so. Yeah, and that's, that's where your comment about new buildings ties into that, so.
So under the waivers, is this something you wanted me to add to this?
No, no, I think you're okay. I think you're okay with that, yeah.
Good, okay.
So I see number twenty-nine says the developer shall submit to the planning to have approved septic plants in the Department of Health. Okay, so just so everyone knows, they haven't gotten their approval from Health and you won't, wouldn't be able to get a building permit unless you got that approval.
Yeah.
It's, I guess it's not a, a major point to be made, but on number twenty-six, it says that the, the bond should be made out to the toe of North Andover rather than the tail.
I will correct that. Thank you.
The big toe.
So number thirty, the wording there, developer shall designate, chosen in consultation with, is that, is that a change from the recent wording and, and wording in other recent decisions?
No, typically what I, what I've seen in the decisions that I've done is that it states that in the, with, under consultation of planning staff, they will choose monitors.
So the reason I ask is some time ago, we modified the wording of that section. I don't know if you remember that, John. So that it, and I, thanks for that.
So you think this is different from what we've been using for the last few?
It might be reverting back to something closer to the one that we changed. I don't know. Could you just check for the recent?
I, I did take this from an older decision.
From an older decision?
So I can go back to-
Could you check that, please?
Yeah, maybe check like some recent ones we've done in the last six months.
Okay. And if they, like, say the last decision that was written, just take that language and replace it with that.
That's the one that we have previously approved, yeah. Thank you.
Anybody, um, other comments? So maybe a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review special permit for, as amended for fourteen twenty-nine Osgood Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you folks here for 31 Johnson Street? Is anyone here for that? Oh, is Phil doing that? It's 31 Johnson Circle?
Yeah.
Yes, so why not? Sorry, I'm going to skip to that. We'll pay you a little longer. Alright, so let's go to 31 Johnson Circle. New public hearing, application for a watershed special permit under sections 4.136, 10.3, and 10.31 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to construct a 14 by 16 foot four-seasoned finished sunroom and a 10 by 10 deck within the non-disturbance zone. Project is located within the R3 zoning district. Hi.
Hi.
Can you introduce yourself and tell us where your address?
I'm Denise Fabley, applicant Denise Favorite. So I own the house at 31 Johnson Circle.
Okay, what are you looking to do?
Been there a long time. I used to live on North Cross Road. So I know what you're saying. And so what I just would like to do is put this 14 by 16 foot room, sunroom really, on the, where my existing, it's a split level ranch. So where the deck is right now on pillars, just put the room there with a new deck to the side of it.
Would you knock down the pillars or would they be on top of it?
Yeah, so we would remove the existing deck entirely.
Okay, get that out, eh?
Yeah, get it completely cleared out and put in a new deck with pillars that have been specified on the, you should have the architectural plans in front of you that have the, you know, the specifications. I have been in front of the.
Concom and you got an approval for?
Yes, thank you.
Small project?
Yes, a small project approval from, and from both, from both, the Conservation Board as well as the Zoning Board last week.
The ZBA already, okay. Great.
Yeah, and I did go myself and I met with the town engineer who is a really nice guy, by the way. Super guy, really nice. And he kept saying, you poor thing, you're going through all this just because you're in the watershed. And I said, yes. And so he said what the architect told me when I originally had the plans drawn up like last November was that what the town would probably would request, what he requests is what he did request. And he sent it, you might have a copy of the letter. I don't know if you copied it for them, Monica, but. Yeah, that he did, he did request. And so I did have Phil Christensen actually modify the special permit plan. And I didn't get enough copies for all of you because.
You scanned that, so.
You did get a, oh, great, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So D W did perform the peer review. And on the peer review, they asked that the engineer identify the outlets for the proposed gutters, include detailed construction details for the proposed gutters, infiltration system, and include construction details of the proposed sedimentation control barrier. So they submitted these plans actually this afternoon. So that's what you see on the screen.
And do we have anything on increased runoff or anything regards to stormwater?
There was a previous, well, there was a previous letter from the engineer, Phil, that I believe I did bring copies of as well. That was from July 19.
Right, so we have the degradation letter here.
And has that been reviewed?
Yes.
Okay, who reviewed that?
John Burgazy. He received the entire packet.
And agreed that will not cause any significant degradation of the water quantity or quality?
Yes, and what I did is I included his letter as well. Yes, I think I did.
Right. This letter of August 10. I might not see this here. I'll bring it up because I don't see it. One moment, please.
I don't recall seeing that.
I have a copy of it. That's right.
Do you know how close the addition is from the edge of the water?
Yeah, I do because it was a big, big back and forth. Because it's like right on the cusp to that 100-foot mark.
Okay.
So, I mean, originally, originally when Norse Environmental came out and tagged the property before the engineers came out and did the survey, they thought it was just outside of it. But then Monica came with Jennifer's views and Jennifer felt that it was just inside. So she wanted it to go through review and from the Conservation Board. And what they did request as well were really two things. They requested that all the building materials not be put on the land, on the ground in the backyard when it's being built, but put on the end of the driveway, which is fine, no problem. And the other thing was she asked to put up, that I put up, two permanent markers on the trees. So she's, I bought them. She's going to come out and put them, tell me where she, how to put them on. But that was really it.
So from where the, is it mostly lawn?
Yeah, it's mostly all lawn. So, you know, if you go down Johnson Circle from Johnson Street, the house is on the right-hand side, right? And so there's an old stone wall that goes down behind the property line. It's the property line for all the houses, like mine and my neighbors down that. And the trees go pretty much back to, I mean, the lawn goes pretty much back to that.
And then the wetland is in the abutting property. It's not on your property.
Yeah.
So the only thing I would add to that, and I support this.
Thank you.
I do. And I think it's a good example of a small project type category. But in addition to being near the wetlands, it is in the watershed.
What?
Now, it's quite a distance from the lake, but the stream that runs through Ridgewood Cemetery runs in the back of this property. And whenever you're near a stream, it does have the potential of accelerating the influence into the lake. So I understand the engineer had said to be no impact, and if nothing goes wrong, there will be no impact. But to me, that's just what caught my attention is the proximity to that stream really reduces the effect of your distance from the lake, that things that happen on this property have the potential of getting into the stream and then quickly into the lake.
I guess I understand. I think, I suspect that's why the town engineer requested that my, the building engineer add this infiltration system from downspouts from the addition into an infiltration system.
Yeah. So that's, that's great.
Oh, yeah.
So that was added to the plan.
Yeah, it's a little bit, I'm asking the question because with small projects like this, we want to protect the lake, but we don't want to put on too burden on the homeowner. And so that's why I was trying to get some sense of, you know, a little bit more context of how close you are, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand the need for it. I appreciate it. When I was on North Cross, I had a lot of, big problem with the water because we built that house and it was not fun.
Good question. Because it's on pillars, and I knew, sorry, probably already was discussed, what is the heating and cooling system?
So it's funny you should ask that. Nobody else has bothered to ask me at all about the heating and cooling system. I've asked a lot of questions about that because I decided not to put on a whole foundation, which is what the builder recommends because it's going to be warmer. But I decided I really didn't want to do that. Plus, I thought it would be more disturbing to the area, to the ground. So what I decided to do was a couple of things. One is that it's costing me a lot more money to build it, but I've got different builders that gave me different quotes. And I've got, I'm very detail oriented. So I'm going to put, what do they call it, foam insulation? Yeah, complete foam insulation. I know you can get away with some and then do some other stuff and that's less expensive. But I've been convinced that doing completely foam insulation on the floor and the walls and the roof is gonna, I think it'll pay for itself. And the other thing is they were going to just extend my hot, what do you call it, forced hot water?
Baseboard.
Baseboard heater. But I've decided I'm going to put a split heat system in because that'll also give me the air conditioning as well. And I think going forward, it's going to be less expensive even though, even though electric costs here are, in this part of the country, I think are expensive. I think that going forward, plus I'm always thinking of the future. I'm an I-deck. And I really believe that they're going to get solar power to the way that it won't look ugly and, you know, things like that. So eventually, oh, I think they're going to do tiles. Believe me, I knew the internet was going to take off. So I think, so that, I think that, and then the other thing is the windows. I'm doing a lot of, you know, I forget what they call it, but it's thicker or whatever, better windows so that it'll have better insulation.
And will the pillars be exposed or will there be something covering like on the perimeter?
I don't know what they're called on the, I don't have, I don't remember, Monica, what they're called. You can see them.
You can see them. So then it'll be like open space?
Yes, so it'll be open space and all that will be underneath the room will just be like the ground was crushed down.
Yeah, crushed down.
Yeah.
Could drain it, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I know, being on a hill, I've always been worried about drainage.
I live on Cary Drive, right up off Lisa Lane.
Oh, off Lisa?
Some kind of near.
Yeah, kind of nearby, yeah. So you, anywhere that's, there's, yeah, hills in New England.
Any other questions? Any members of the public? No? Okay.
One thing I want to bring up is the update that the revised plans were submitted this afternoon. I did send them to the town engineer, but he has not had a chance to review them yet. And those plans show the things, the items that he asked for, the identification of where the gutters are going to go and infiltration.
What's your timeline on this?
Well, I was hoping to get approval today to start the clock for the 20, isn't there a 20-day waiting period after today?
20-day after this.
So, yeah.
Would we make it contingent on the engineer?
Well, we don't have a, do we have a decision?
Actually, I did draft something just in case. So I can pass that on if you want or like however you want to.
Feel comfortable voting on it, contingent on the approval of the town engineer to the new plan?
You're probably better off waiting two weeks.
Yeah, because one thing I was waiting for was to hear from the building commissioner. I just want him to confirm the size of the addition to make sure that she was going to be far below the increase of 25%, which she does.
Let, we're gonna, I wanted to vote today, but I think with those things, just in case there's a problem, it's hard. We don't want to undo something that we did if there's a problem. So we'll put it over for two weeks from now and make sure we get the comments from the building inspector and the town engineer on the new plans and then we'll vote it on.
So you have another meeting in two weeks where you can vote on this?
Yep.
Should I come, I need to come back to that? It's a public meeting?
It's another public, we're going to continue the public hearing. I would recommend it just in case there are any questions or any changes, but should be relatively quick.
Okay.
And since you're continued, we'll put you at the top.
Okay. Well, thank you for moving me up today. Last week I was last. And it was long.
So we will continue this for?
September 4th.
September 4th.
September 4th, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Continued public hearing master plan. Who knows where we left off?
I think so. I've never used this for this one, so that's great. If you want to drive, you can as well. Yeah, but you can use.
All right, so where are we picking up? Do you want to talk about the master plane, plan changes, addendum number two? Just kind of go through those quickly and then pick up through the rest?
Yeah, you all received that? Okay, perfect.
I have it here, thank you.
Okay. So just, so page four. We'll start with economic development. At the top of page four of the actual document, it says page 78, economic development. So there, crossed out the first one, talking specifically about Osgood Landing. Moved up the, the next bullet to be first in order. Talked a little bit more about the Stevens Estate, sort of evaluating the potential there, but also recognizing that we want to maintain the historic value in the surrounding open space. And then in replace of the Osgood-specific bullet, I added to the end of this list the idea of working with more than just them in terms of large landowners, which we talked a lot about at the last meeting. Just below that, also under page 78, economic development, we discussed just trying to add at least something in about the airport, recognizing that as an asset here in North Andover. And I also looked back at the 2000 master plan to kind of see what they talked about with the airport. So I added in this recommendation, which just let me know if you think this meets your expectations. But in partnership with the city of Lawrence, evaluate the economic impacts of the Lawrence Municipal Airport to determine options for maximizing economic develop, excuse me, economic benefits to both communities. Try to keep it high level. I didn't know how specific you'd want to get with that. On the transportation chapter, under page 94, at the end, I forget if I covered this the last time or not. I may have made this change prior under the first addendum. But just adding in that there should be more conducting of traffic counts on our tier-oral roadways to make sure that the data is recent and relevant.
Let me ask you this because it sort of implicitly came up tonight in our discussion. Are there any best practices about, you know, kind of this whole notion of keeping people away from roads that were never intended to be through roads? I mean, now with Waze and all these other things, everybody's going crazy with it. But I mean, is it, you know, are there any best practices? I mean, is it, do you physically design the roads a little bit differently? Maybe slow people down and make it less attractive? Is that really the solution?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think now with GPS and Waze and other mobility apps, it's rerouting people in ways, pardon the pun, but in ways that I don't think traffic engineers, you know, a couple of years ago, ever, ever imagined. I mean, I use Waze, I travel all over and I use Waze all the time. And sometimes if there's bad traffic on the main arterials, it's taking me through neighborhoods. And I feel bad about it as a planner, but I got to get to where I'm going sometimes, right? So, but yeah, I think it's, I think signage can help to some degree, but I think the design of the actual roads and trying to find ways to narrow the road. I mean, there's a million studies out there that say, you know, the narrower the road and the more sort of slight turns or jogs in the road, it kind of forces people to go a little bit slower. Rather, if you've got a wide straight shot and you can see, you know, 1,000 feet to the end, it looks like a drag strip.
I also have a theory that I haven't quite proven, but it seems like wherever there's roads that are, have striping, new striping where there weren't any before, people seem to go faster. to go faster, but I don't know if that's really true.
Yeah.
It's like, people, they get, they get a painted lane, they think, that takeoff, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm back on this.
Interesting theory.
There are some experimental streets that Federal Highway has, has approved as a typology. I think they've got some down on the Cape, in the, kinda in the more rural, less populated areas where they, uh, and also a lot of places where they don't have room to put sidewalks or bike facilities, but they wanna be able to accommodate for those modes of transportation. They'll, they'll strip the stripes off the roads and they'll just almost create a, a road where you're sort of just figuring out where you need to go, and most people know to stay to the right or, you know.
Yeah, it's interesting, in Andover, they, they have some subtle things where they let you park on one side of the road for a stretch, and then they move it to the other side of the street, so the road is sort of going like this, and so you have to slow down.
Yeah, yep.
So you added the lot, said the library.
Uh, yep, so, I think, I think I've been over everything else, so yeah, if you go down to page, um, so page six of the addendum, where it says page one eighty-two, public facilities and services, so, um, a week or two ago, Gina and I met with Stan and some folks from the library when I was out here to talk a little bit more about the concerns that we heard at the last public hearing. Um, I also got some, uh, one-page written material, uh, from the folks at the library too. Um, and there were a number of recommendations, and I took liberties here, but I tried to condense them down into one recommendation, uh, a little bit more general, but then I added some of that italicized text as context, which incorporated a lot of their recommend, or at least I think they incorporated a lot of their recommendations about partnerships, uh, expanding funding and programming, working closer, closely with the schools, continuing that partnership, uh, partnering with the Council on Aging and the Youth Center to try to have sort of intergenerational programming. So I've tried to capture that under both the recommendation bullet as well as the text underneath it.
I, I think it's great, I think it's a really good addition, and it captures the dialogue that we had, and, you know, great thoughts about the library, and I'm glad you were able to meet with, with, uh, library personnel and planning to, to work on this, I think it's really good.
Have you done other, um, library, um, modifications like this in other towns, just like, what are you trying to create here, like, you know, like where, could we go and visit one, could we see one? I mean, the library's such a prominent thing in town, but a lot of them are just new for, you know, going in for checking books out or studying, um, so to make it more of a community space, it needs, what do you, what draws that community space?
Uh, I think the programming helps a lot, so having a lot of different programs, and, you know, I think the library from, from, at least from what we understand, is doing some of that already, and they'd like to expand where they can.
Yeah.
With the funding that they have available. Um, yeah, I mean, a lot of libraries are shifting into this sort of a newer space where you write, back when book was the media of choice and magazines and newspapers, that was kind of one of the primary functions of library in addition to meeting and gathering space for the community, but now I think it's, it's really shifting, it's still that, but, you know, there's also electronic media that's out there now, there's programming, there's partnerships with schools and, you know, partnerships with groups like the Council on Aging.
Is it, could it be commercially driven somehow, that you could get amenities in there that would also draw people in? Say, cafe-type stuff or anything, have you seen libraries do that? I work in Cambridge, so I see a lot of different nuances to, you know, spaces.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if, I don't know if I've seen?
Seen that, yeah.
A cafe space in there.
Just curious.
I'd have to think about that.
Yeah.
I've seen performance space.
Yeah.
Uh, we visited a library in Brookline that had a huge, uh, like, almost like a little mini concert hall.
Yeah.
Uh, where they put on piano recitals and stuff on the backside of their library. But I'd have to think about that.
Just thinking of utilization, a lot of times they go in the library and it's just not, they're not used the same way anymore.
Right.
You know, so, just trying to think.
The question, this may not be the right spot, but it's, it's close, is, we have a, a number of, I, I think, very interesting institutions in this town that are not, uh, they're not, they're nonprofits as opposed to municipal. Uh, and I'm thinking, to some degree, I think we do a pretty good job with them, but I think we could do better, like, you know, obviously, something like the trustees, and I, it's, it's, it's an asset, it's a extraordinary resource that, and it looks like they're trying to be more open going forward. But there's also, I think, Windrush Farm, which people don't completely realize that we actually own a lot of the land there, but it's a, uh, it's a very unique special institution. Um, you know, there's Merrimack College, obviously, and, you know, maybe even Brooks School, but I'm thinking is, do we have a section in this where we deal with sort of other cultural and nonprofit institutions and how they bring improved quality of life for the community?
Um, yeah, I mean, in the, in the, the historic and cultural section, we've tried to capture some of that.
Yeah.
But it tends to deal a little bit more with the kind of history of the town, maybe not necessarily as much with bringing institutions like a Merrimack to the table for maybe more forward-looking cultural, uh, opportunities. Um, that's a good point.
I think it's a great point, John, the examples you gave, Rolling Ridge is another one.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, really as a collection, it's, for a small town, it's, it's, uh, pretty significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd love to see something, at least commenting on this as part of the mix here, that's, that's different and special.
Yeah.
And you've done such a great job adding comments like this, that we'd love to see more.
Uh, the last thing I'll just mention, also suggestion of the library, was just to add them where appropriate to the list of local government partners in the implementation table, so we'll make sure that's reflected as well.
Can I go back to an earlier comment here? I just have been thinking about it, back on the first page of this addendum, on the health, healthy community, and I appreciate you putting that in there in a previous meeting. You gave a number of examples, access to park, recreation, transportation, healthy food choices. I would think that one of the sort of most obvious ones is access to clean drinking water, since we have our own source here and most, most town, many towns are on a, you know, MWRA, but for us, that's a special concern related to public health.
Yep.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, do we want to continue our setup going through the goals? See if we can finish those up tonight.
Yeah.
Great.
I think we're on open space goal one.
Okay, what page?
Uh, one thirteen-ish.
So, anyone who hasn't been following, uh, we're going, uh, through the different goals outlined in the master plan. We've gone through the first four major sections, and now we're talking about, uh, open space goals. Okay. So we have continue efforts to expand recreation opportunities and water resources, is that what we're looking?
Uh, it should be promote awareness of North Andover's open space resources.
Uh, goals and recognition, okay.
Uh, keep going down.
Yep.
A little further.
So one thing, I think we had talked about, so are people comfortable with the idea of creating an open space and conservation committee, a, a special independent committee for open space and conservation? I'm just always conservative in, um, creating new committees, it's great to have people volunteer, but we also don't wanna have too much bureaucracy.
I think there is, there's a couple ways to look at it, is if you look at it today, um, the Conservation Commission actually plays a central role in terms of that, I think by statutes too, I think a lot of the property is, is owned by the Conservation Commission. The, the thing I'd like to check is, this is, uh, is that over the years, we've had various, uh, open space committees that were adjuncts to the Conservation Commission, including the Trails Committee that's there now. But there's a provision under the CPA law that actually the Trails Committee or Open Space Committee actually has a seat, a separate seat in the CPA, which I don't think we're following today, and I, I, I wanna go back and look at that, 'cause I just sort of found out about that, but I, I've always felt having a robust, uh, you could make it the Trails Committee, maybe on steroids, is, is actually an important thing to have, uh, because you wanna have some group of people that are passionate about open space and are willing to put time and effort into it, and, um, that, in my mind, is the best vehicle for doing it.
So maybe have it as a, um, a, a, a greater version of the Trails Committee. I, I always just worry about burnout, about having too many committees to staff.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
But if it's something that we can have people that are already interested in and merge it into just giving them a little more responsibilities, or more, a, a larger scope of, of things to discuss, that makes.
I mean, one of the things we've talked about that wouldn't necessarily be part of this, but, you know, over the years, we've talked about establishing a land trust, but that would be a completely independent organization, separate from the government.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm comfortable keeping it in, just, I think, as long as we're mindful of how that might come into existence. Okay. All right, um, and then, goal two. Public recreational access to the Merrimack River by the Shawshien River Trail and Boat Rim. Tom, what can you tell us about that one? That's interesting to me.
Uh, it was just an idea to try to create more of a, more of a connection than there is now with the river, um, and this was one of the locations that was pointed out. Um, I will say, a number of the suggestions in this section two were lifted from the open space plan because it had been completed so recently, I think right before we started the master plan, um, so we tried to create as much synergy with that as we could.
I love the idea of trying to make Stevens Pond, you know, something more year-round. It's always, seems like the summer goes so quick and it's just done and over with, um, so, fall, whether it's fall or ice skating, or, I think that would be great. Peter, do you have any thoughts about a lake or watershed oversight committee?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think that's not the only place that it's referred to, and...
That's not, I know, we've talked about this all about.
We did, uh, so my view of that is that the previous master plans, I think the last two, uh, commented on, uh, a need for some sort of cohesive, I don't wanna say oversight, but, you know, entity of some sort that goes across, um, sort of town silos. And we talked about this last time, you know, the water treatment plant has its role, and I think it's, people maybe sometimes think that the role is broader than it is. So, I, 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 I think there's a strong basis to have wording like that in here, because previous master plans have said that.
So I think the key that is though, what you're talking about is broader than just open space.
Correct.
So, is this, I do think we've seen that other places, but I think it would be, I don't know if we can kind of crystallize that, is that lake or watershed oversight committee would be appropriate for, you know, in the, in the preservation of natural resources and the economic, I mean, I think, you know, to the extent that, that we can have, um, you know, economic activities or, um, recreation, but also, and also the drinking water, so kind of, I think the oversight, I think that's a great idea, I just wanna make sure it touches more than just open space.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely, and I think, uh, as Peter mentioned, it's, I think it pops its head out first in the land use, uh, chapter.
Okay, I know we've seen it before.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a way to?
Like define, define it somehow?
Either define it or cross-reference it, just to say that it's in, you know, that, uh, it makes it through a lake or watershed oversight committee, you know, parentheses, you know, in conjunction with its land use, just somehow to reference it that it's in multiple places, I'm not really sure the best way to do that.
And in, along the same vein, probably not on this page, but in the other section where this is referred to, I don't recall if we make reference to this having been raised in prior master plans, and I think a parenthetical reference to that might be helpful.
Yeah, I don't think that's in here anywhere.
Okay, so, you know, the one thing about, uh, the trails, which I'm a big fan of, I have one around my house, we like the trails, but, um, it does strike me that there's, there's a resource and maintenance aspect to trails, and it might be as, uh, simple as trash, because where there's trails, you do find trash, and, you know, I think the DPW is pretty constrained as to what they can do in terms of taking care of trash on trails, and, um, I don't have a solution for it, but, I mean, there's a lot of good vibe here about trails, you know, who doesn't like trails, but there actually is a resource and a maintenance piece associated with that, and, again, I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but...
Seems like something one of these committees could...
We don't address it, and maybe we don't need to here.
Yeah.
Do you, have you seen any, have, have you seen that addressed in other master plans somehow?
Uh, more so probably with suggestions of, you know, add trashcans or receptacles or something at trailheads or parking lots, you know, carry-in, carry-out kind of thing.
Get some signage.
Yeah, signage, that kind of stuff. Um, I'm not sure if I've seen anything about staffing or resource, or, you know, resources for a DPW or whoever.
We've had a long-running conversation with DPW about one trashcan by a public access place on the lake, and it's, it's a real struggle. And, and for good reason, they're limited in their resources, so every time you add a trashcan, someone has to empty it.
I think you, you could even scale that up more broadly to, uh, support recreation facilities, I mean, if, if you think about it, one of the things that we've contended with is part of CPA, like with, uh, the recreation facilities, the playgrounds, is that, yeah, you can put a playground in, but if you don't maintain it, it'll go to seep pretty quickly, and one of the things I give the town manager credit for is that he's, he's explicitly allocated money for the maintenance of those places, and I think there's no other solution than fighting the bull and saying, you just have to do it.
Right. Huh. I wonder if there's been any similar discussion, I, I, I think you're absolutely right, it's part of a larger issue.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's been any similar discussion, not only for the recreational fields, but also for the trails that we all seem to advocate for.
I mean, the Trails Committee, I think, does a pretty good job of that, there's probably not enough of them, and, you know, it may involve to the same small handful of people do it, and maybe that's a problem, but, I mean, I think ultimately, the more ownership of a resource you can put in people's hands, the better they take care of it, and that's maybe what we have to try to figure out how to do.
Yeah. Okay. So we got some, uh, goal three is to do with the trails.
Yeah.
Seems to make sense.
We're certainly doing that in spades now with the money we spent this year.
Create more athletic fields, I think we're on top of that.
I think we're on top of that, why not?
And I think organize more community-wide events in downtown and other central locations, I think that's coming along. Um, the, I went to the artisan market this weekend and the farmer's market, and that was well-attended, well-put-together, the hayride was awesome. Um, there are a bunch of event in town, common, it'd be nice to, I don't know how, they, they seem to be similar each year, so if we could maybe... maybe, people seem to be adding some stuff, which is good. But I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job of that, just to keep that in there as something to keep working on. Doing a good job with that.
I hope you know I missed group exercise on the common just to be here with you.
Yeah, right. Same process. Okay. Historic, cultural, natural resources.
Is there one on open space? Maybe the first one is just, we should continue our program to conserve more open space?
We don't have anything in there right now about that.
I kind of think if there's anything we ought to put in, that's what we ought to put in because I think there is the presumption that the continued preservation of open space is important.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Well, Goal One does say, continue preservation of the community's natural landscape. But are you suggesting we add something?
Well, I, yeah, I'd be more explicit to say, continue our program to conserve open space.
I think Goal One might, we might edit it to be more explicit.
Maybe that, maybe that, that's the case. Yeah.
I do agree that we ought to be more explicit. That might be a good place to put it.
Yeah.
John, how would you, how would you like to augment Goal One?
Let's see, where is Goal One?
But if just there, we do have, actually starting in the next section on page 146, one of the goals is acquire otherwise protected priority open space parcels from the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
As identified through the most current open space and recreation.
Okay. Now I see that. If that's in there, then that's, you know.
More shadowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well done.
Yeah, there, there you go. Yeah.
I think we need some, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
So create a local historic preservation master plan. I think that's, I think that's an interesting idea. I think, you know, part of, I've seen those in the past where you start with like a survey, like what do we have currently?
Yep.
What's on the historic register? What could be on the historic register? What do we already have around town? I, I think a survey is just a great place to just, to start. You know, what's out there? What do we have? What do we need to, you know, get historic covenants on? What is already protected? What should be protected? And then go from there to, you know, it's a good way to then, like to CPA money and.
I mean, we have an interesting one right now if we think about it, that house on Main Street that's for sale.
Which one's that?
Oh, the big one.
The white one? The big lot?
Oh, the big one?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's pretty historic and we're used to seeing it sit the way it sits.
Or historic. Yeah. Establish a seat for historical society board members on the cultural council, historical commission, machine shop, neighborhood conservation district. I mean, I see how those all overlap, but I'm not sure that you need to, I'm just not so sure about amending those particular boards to require a seat from someone.
There's actually a fair amount of that that exists today. I think that, you know, like, there's somebody from the historical commission that's on the CPA.
Right.
That's more of the.
Yes, on the, yes, from the historical commission on the CPA. But this is saying to put people on a non-town board as ex officio.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't either. I agree with you, people, I like the one board going to the other. I mean, it's hard for volunteers, but I'm not sure about putting a non-town board member as an ex officio. I'm in favor of striking that particular one unless there's a particular reason to have it.
I'd agree with that.
Okay.
So the next one also was include a seat. Did you see that?
Include a seat for historical commission and historical society board member. Yeah, could we just have, consider adopting an economic development entity? And we can get into the details of that afterwards.
So that is in the economic development chapter? Like if we were to just trim it to that first half of the sentence?
Yeah.
That's the recommendation in the economic development chapter.
With the historical commission and historical board member or just?
Nope. Well, I mean.
Yeah, we talked about that before, right? About whether or not, yeah.
To create one, right.
So then we can just cut this one?
Yeah, I was saying, if you wanted to cut this at the end of economic development entity and put a period there, then I would say remove the whole thing because it's already referenced.
So if anyone wants to do that, yeah, I remember we had, we had a good discussion about that. So, yeah, why don't we remove that? These next two are really good.
I was thinking, just to go back to Goal Three really quick, the comment about Merrimack, Windrush, Rolling Ridge, that might, this might be a good place for that one.
Yeah, I think a lot of those things are actually coming up.
Because this one's all about developing stronger connections, so I could probably put that one in here.
Okay.
And the thought there, John, was really the nonprofits, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, I think there's like comments, you know, I think it nails the trustees perfectly in terms of the role they play.
Okay. So we can get to go to the next section? It's on page 180.
So before we start this section, I had exchanged some emails with Eric Cifori earlier, later last week. So the town manager has been going through this section in particular, public facilities, and has a couple of comments that I need, Eric's going to get to me, just with regard to updates. This plan's been going on for a while and obviously the town doesn't stop doing things as I'm, as we're putting together the plan. So there has been some, some pretty substantial updates, I think, to a couple of facilities that I'll make. But I'll report back on those next time we meet.
So, support and or expand resources just needs of residents of all ages suffering from opiate addiction overdoses. I certainly think that's important. I'm just wondering if that's too specific, right? Because master plans last five, 10, 15 years. Hopefully that won't be a problem as much 15 years.
Hopefully not.
Fifteen years before now, we had other certainly issues with drugs, but it wasn't opiate. So maybe just from addiction.
It's like substance abuse.
Substance abuse, you know, mental health. So just comes some more broad categories of health-related, mental health-related topics. And you can put even, you can keep opiate if you want, but, but I just say, I think it should just be a little broader. Substance abuse probably would work.
Okay.
And then the opioid crisis, I think that's fine to keep in there. I mean, I think that is now and that's something we are going to be dealing with in the foreseeable future, but it's still not broad enough to.
And you said you were going to receive those changes from the town manager?
Yeah, as soon as I get them from Eric.
Is that something we can put on the addendum for the next meeting?
Yes.
Just as red lines or?
Yeah, so the plan, I think, will be, why don't we just finish this and then we'll, and then we'll go to that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. How are we going to do that? We already talked somewhere about looking into the underwire electrical and stuff like that, right? We added that somewhere.
I believe in economic development.
Yeah, we forgot it somewhere.
I know we talked about it.
Yep.
Okay. Has that always been in there?
I think so.
So why don't we, why don't we talk about some next steps and then talk about implementation? Because I actually think implementation's an important point that we should talk about. But let's just kind of go over what the next steps are before that. What page is the implementation on?
So separate starts on page one. It's like a appendix. It's got the matrix.
Yeah. Okay. So I think the plan is, as I understand it, is that once we're kind of done with this tonight, is to, now we'll have kind of a basic draft with whatever amendments we've discussed and to circulate that to interested parties, I think. Board of Selectmen, departments have it available for just comments and then take all of those kind of comments, bring them back, discuss at our next meeting and potentially vote at the next meeting. I think that's the basic plan. If we have enough time, hopefully, to have everyone take a look at it in the next couple of weeks. If not, the meeting after that. But I would, I'd like to, if we can, at the next, if not the last meeting of September. As part of that, I think we should have a discussion, we could probably have it next time, about implementation. You know, there's a recommendation here about a master plan implementation committee. I know we had a master plan committee for kind of creating it. Implementation to me seems a little bit different than master plan kind of creation. It's really about ideas, getting as many ideas and figuring what we have now and where we want to go. Implementation takes that and then adds all these different levels, you know, with funding and other plans that we currently have and things like that. So I think we need, might need a, some of the same type of people, but also maybe a broader group. Also, you know, people, you know, some with, with different backgrounds and also authorities, you know, and that are kind of keyed in as part of the town. So just to think about how we would do that, is that something that we should create and manage? Something the board of selectmen should create and manage? Something that should be joint? So just, just kind of think about and then we can kind of discuss it the next meeting. I mean, if you wanted.
Can I just throw a thought out?
Yeah.
That, you know, the notion of creating a committee like this, you know, I think I understand the logic because you want follow.
Right.
But is it another alternative to say that this is a master plan with, you know, pretty good input? There are already a series of committees, standing committees of departments within the town. Instead of creating a committee, give to the existing departments and committees, here's the master plan for you to implement. So, you know, the planning board would have a role, conservation, board of health, finance committee, all of the governance committees that exist in town and departments, DPW, police and fire, school, here's a master plan to implement.
So I think the question is, so I think that's where it gets to. The question is, do you need a middleman, right? Do you need that middle person to, that middle grouper to coordinate all those things? So if you just give everything, here's the master plan.
Right.
What if DPW starts, okay, well, we want to start on this section. We want to start on sidewalks.
Yeah.
And Trail says we want, or Open Space says we want to start on this. I mean, all of it can necessarily be done at the same time?
Yeah.
And should certain things be done together and coordinated? It's not easy. It is, I mean, that's why it takes, you know, 10, 15 years. But is there, could there be a committee that focuses and prioritizes? And would that be helpful? I think that's the question.
I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to think that it is a positive idea. But I look at it, because I think there's two roles and they're distinct that potentially committee could play. One, it could be like the cop that keeps track, get the traffic, do this, do that, do the other thing. But I'm more inclined to think it's more the opposite, that a lot of the stuff in a master plan sort of gets done and then put on the shelf and forgotten. And so I view it as more the conscious of, hey, we said this stuff's important, nobody's doing anything about it. Let's, let's do something here and keep us all honest. So it's more that role that I see as being a valuable role than being the traffic cop. But I think you could do both and maybe that's why you need two types of people. But I think it's got to be light touch because if you start getting into heavy implementation mode and stuff like that, it'll fall apart in five minutes.
Yeah. And that's, I'm not sure it should be a master plan implementation committee because I agree with you, Peter. The implementation is not really on that committee. One, they don't hold the purse strings, right? And two, that, I don't think their role, I think their role is organizing, assisting, you know, how can we help move these things along?
Yeah.
What, what, where can we bring in private partnership? Hey, why don't we talk to the trustees? Why don't we talk to this, you know, because when you're running a town, it's hard to do all of these things.
You could call a governance group an advisory council or something like that.
Exactly. I think it's advisory and helping, just really helping to keep the momentum of doing a master plan and not having it sit on the shelf. And so, okay. So what I'd like is kind of just, if people could just kind of think about and, and come back to this, when we come back next time, to maybe have some ideas about who would be, not necessarily individual people, but from where would we draw people for this? What would, I mean, a name would be great, but what kind of advisory council are we talking about? Are we talking about a member of the planning board, a member of the board of selectmen, who's doing the appointing? Those kind of details, we don't need the actual people, but just an idea so that we could, I'd like to move from, we have a master plan to let's start doing something with our master plan. And certainly Eric, Jean, if you guys have input on that, we would love to get that.
Yep.
Okay. So anyone from the public that has a comment about the master plan? No? Okay. So let us, we'll continue the hearing for September 4th. Eric, once you have the changes that we've talked about today and the changes from the town manager, I doubt that you get that to Monica or to Jean and then Eric and then you guys can forward it to anyone you think that might be interested or might have comments and then hopefully we can have a close to final draft to review within the next meeting or the meeting after.
For the changes that we talked about tonight, whatever I get from Eric, do you want that just issued as we have been with an addendum, addendum number three?
Yes.
Okay.
And but, but I think it would be good to have a, would it be in a final draft version or is that?
Yeah. So right now, I've just been taking the draft that we've been working with since the initial public hearing and I've just been redlining it along the way. I haven't accepted any of the changes just so I can kind of keep a running tally of all that. So we could put out a red line?
Yes, I think that's good.
Okay.
Another idea for the implementation, you could do like a sponsorship committee. So it's like the same type of it, but just a different name, but essentially you're sponsoring like, you know, the administration or the implementation of the master plan, but just, just another way to word it to use that.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. So continue this public hearing to September 4th.
Before we break, I had a chance to put the land use chapter into its final format. If you, and maybe Monica could just really quickly flip through it. And if you hate it, tell me.
Looks pretty snazzy.
Yeah, it is. Are there any maps? I think Jennifer's approval.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing I had a fair, so all the maps are formatted 11 by 17, just because they're harder to read at eight and a half by 11, but if you'd prefer them to be eight and a half by 11, I can shrink them down.
Looks good.
I like the maps.
Looks good. Great. Anything else?
What's the schedule to finalize it, the master plan? Like what was the?
So we'll come back September 4th and if we have all the changes, we'll discuss those. And then I, my understanding is then we vote, correct? Does it go, and then does it go to the board of selectmen?
No, it's going to the board of selectmen for the table of the awards and comments back there.
Okay.
Whether or not those comments will leave, frankly, in time for the fourth, let's.
We'll have to see, okay.
Ultimately, they will make their comment back to the board and then the board once those comments and any other comments come in. And then, you know, final approval is just the board, that's it.
So then I, would, if they're getting it on, on the 27th, then probably give them enough time and, and then Eric time to put it together. Most likely we'll have it on for the 4th. We can, we could mostly maybe discuss more on the implementation and then probably vote on it the next time, once we have all the comments. So that's why we'll probably vote on it the last meeting, which we changed the date, right? Just like the last week of September, I think.
Yeah, the, the meeting, second meeting in September is at the, I think it's the 25th.
Yes, it's changed to 25th.
Eighteenth is a, is a Jewish holiday. Okay, okay. Speaking of schedules, we have the planning board proposed calendar for 2019. I note that Tuesday, January 1st is our scheduled meeting. As I recall, that is a holiday. Town hall is closed.
You want to bring your streamers and party cats?
Yeah. Suggestions? Skip that, take it the eighth? Do we have, what time?
Well, I remember last January being busy and granted, there's a whole other reason for that. But I presume by that time we're going to start thinking about town, warrants for the town meeting. So I think making some accommodation to keep that meeting in January is probably worth it.
So what, what meetings do we have in December? What's our December meetings?
December, we have December 4th and December 18th.
Okay, so, yeah, I do, I agree. I don't think I want to go a month, so.
Yeah.
Can we do January 8th?
It's Friday, Tuesday, January.
Yeah.
So we want it shut down until the 8th and the 22nd and keep your space in.
Yeah.
That's an excellent idea, as long as the room is open. Has the ZBA set their meetings yet? Have we trumped them? All right, let's set them for the 8th and the 22nd, location to be determined. Okay. Potential zoning changes, so that was something that I asked to be put on. This is just to, to start a discussion. As part of this master plan, we've been talking about simplifying some of the zoning. So kind of as a homework assignment, I think I'd like people to kind of just take a look at the zoning map. Also, those of you who've been on the board for a while to think of maybe some easier places where we might be able to make some simplified zoning, just to kind of start this process. I know I'd met with Eric about this. ZBA's also kind of got to think about issues that have been kind of cropping up with them over and over again that we might be able to kind of address somewhat easily, especially kind of the downtown. Maybe kind of look if there are overlays that we can just kind of, kind of get rid of and simplify. So just to kind of take a look and maybe at our next meeting or the one after that, just to come back with some ideas about how we may be able to just start the ball rolling on some easier zoning changes. And hopefully we can also get some comments from the planning department on, on your thoughts on that as well. Okay? And then meeting minutes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting. It's for July 24th.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.